Good evening. This is the April 27th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We have some adjournments to announce.
Okay, appeal 2023-020644 Rowan Oak Avenue LLC. Suffolk County Tax Map number 126-4-3 professional business zoning will be adjourned.
My name is there.
It will be adjourned to May 11th, 2023.
Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
And appeal 2023-.
Whoa, 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 let me get, I gotta get the vote. Mrs. Zewski.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Ms. Gazillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Next one up.
Okay, appeal 2023-024 Christopher Batta 11 Oak Street, Jamesport. Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-93-1-10 RV 40 zoning will be adjourned to May 25th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Zewski.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Ms. Gazillo. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Was this voted?
Yeah.
Yeah, recused by this.
Okay.
Ms. Gazillo does not have a vote. I did vote, yes. Okay, next up.
Okay, appeal 2024-047 Sherry Kai 111 Second Street, Jamesport. Suffolk County Tax Map number 90, sorry, 600-92-6-1 RV 40 zoning. Vervariance is in a relief from town code chapter 301-15A1B. Where proposed 43.3 foot side accessory setback. Minimum allowed 50 feet. Chapter 301-15A1C where proposed five foot rear accessory setback. Minimum allowed is 20 feet and this was adjourned from February 9th, 2023.
Is this be heard? Can you be heard?
Is the applicant here?
Okay, let's move on to the next one.
They're not on Zoom, are they?
All right.
Wait a minute.
Let's just proceed to the next one and if they call in or they show up, we'll take it from there.
Actually, someone's ringing my phone. It says AP.
Anybody on Zoom that wants to speak, raise your hand so we can see it and then we'll try to fix the microphone problem.
See your hand on the left, maybe.
Yes, fellow, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, board, how are you this evening?
Wait a minute, hold on now.
Uh, this is Anthony.
Hold on.
Anthony Portella.
Hold on.
A.
Raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
State your name and your address.
Anthony Portella, 12500 Main Road, Matatuck, New York, 11952.
You have the floor.
Uh, so about two days ago, we received comments back from the, uh, from landmarks and they've asked us to change the design of the building. So I'm just asking if we can adjourn to the ne- to next month. So, cause I'd like to provide the board with the, with the latest design. We just haven't had time to revise it. Since we just received the comments.
I don't have a problem with that.
This application is located in South Jamesport in the historic district. So it requires Landmarks Preservation Committee to review.
Okay. All right, we have no problem with that.
It's the Second Street one?
It's Second Street, right?
Yes, it's green in the second.
So you want to adjourn, man, is that correct?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone else to be heard on this matter?
May 11th.
May 11th?
May 11th is the next meeting and then on May 25th is the second meeting.
Let's make it, let's make it the second meeting.
Yeah, we want to make sure the plans are completed.
Yeah. So let's hear a.
That'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move that appeal number 2022047 be adjourned to May 27th, 2023.
Second.
Mrs. Zewski.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. See you then.
Thank you, board, bye bye.
Have a good night.
25th?
You said 7th.
27th. 27th.
He said 27th.
It's gonna be 25th.
May 25th.
I said 25th.
The question I'm getting is, you know.
Appeal 2023-018 John Ingrid Cordvaleski 41 Bayside Avenue, Jamesport. Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-93-1-5 RV 40 zoning. Vervariance is in our relief from chapter 301-17 where proposed side setback is 10 feet. 125 feet is required. Chapter 301-17 where proposed combined side yard 21 feet, 1 inch where 55 feet is required. Chapter 301-14 where upper levels in an accessory structure are not incidental to or customarily found in a single family dwelling. Chapter 301-17 where proposed side accessory setback 5 feet, 20 feet is required. Chapter 301-15A1A where accessory structure is not permitted to be constructed in the front yard. Chapter 301-17 where proposed imperious surface 22.6% when maximum allowed is 15%. And chapter 301-17 where proposed rear yard setback is 24 feet to covered portion of rear deck when 60 feet is required.
All right, you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Kindly state your name and your address.
I'm John Scott Cordvalesi. My residence, current residence is in 105 Wahele Place, Honolulu, Hawaii. And we're here to speak about a property at 41 Bayside in Jamesport.
Okay.
So I'm co-owner of the property with my wife Ingrid, who's here, who has an intimate knowledge of the property as well. So she's a great person to field questions to as well. So I'm born and raised on Long Island. I have four sisters who live in Suffolk County, including one who lives in Laurel. The house, the property has been in my family for 80 years. It belonged to my grandfather and went to my parents and then now I have that, have the property. As I get closer and closer to retirement, which is probably just a couple of years away, I'd like to be able to spend a lot more time. I love the North Fork, I love Jamesport. It's actually the best memories of my life were growing up here. However, the house in question is literally a shack. It has no insulation, no heat, no air conditioning. Bathroom, you have to access by actually walking out on a little porch in the front yard. So we would like to have a place that is, that we can come to year round and spend a lot more time here. So, and we also want a small place. So we've decided to, we would, requesting to build a house with two bedrooms. The footprint will be virtually the same as the existing footprint. The house, we want to move it actually away from the water by 10 feet to protect it from the elements. The setbacks on either side will actually slightly increase just by a foot or two. The, when we move the house back, it will actually abut the existing even more of a shack garage that's there. So we would like to take that down and build a new garage at the northeast corner of the property. Which I, I hope you all can see the pictures that my wife printed out there.
Yeah, we have these too.
Great, thank you very much. And that garage would be about, I think it's about a one and a half car garage, enough for one car. And my, my wife, as you'll hear a little more in a second, is a, is a woodworker and she plans to have a shop there. She wants to do a lot of the finish work herself and she's quite good at that. The, the upper floor is going to be a studio. She is an avid, in addition to woodworker, she's a violin maker, a luthier. And she's made a total of, I think, 11 violins and violas over the past many years. And that's, that's her favorite hobby and that will be her work area. I may steal a little space for doing home office type work as well. So that's, that's the, how we're going to be using it. I think those are the main, oh, if you'd also look at the pictures, there's precedent for similarly situated garages along the entire Bayside Avenue. As we point out, several of which are quite large, quite a bit larger than the one we're proposing. Including our next door neighbor, I, I see that Joe Fisaro, who's a good friend of mine, is on the line as well. It will actually be situated right next to where his existing garage is. And Joe and I spoke today, Joe, so we have three neighbors in question. The Bakers on the western side of the house. And they are fully support the project. I'm having trouble pronouncing their last name, Zepp, Zepp or Zamoras, who are across the street, who fully support the project. And Joe Fisaro, who obviously is online here and he'll, he'll present his concerns. Joe and I spoke today and his, I don't want to speak for him, but his main concern to us was a loss of privacy from the landing that we have from the stairway that goes from the yard up to the studio, the art studio. And he was concerned about people gathering there and then looking into their yard. And I would, to be honest, I'd have a similar concern and I, I tried to reassure Joe that is, we have no interest in hanging out on that landing. We will be spending all of our time in the beachside where we have a porch, that's where we will be. All, you know, these are 50 foot wide lots. So nobody has perfect, nobody has perfect privacy on a 50 foot lot, 50 foot wide lot. So his second story windows look into our yard. Our, some of our windows will look into his yard. I, I want to assure Joe and the committee that we have, the privacy goes both ways. We, we both want privacy and we plan on planning probably arborvitae's, which I hope grow 15 feet high and afford him privacy as well as us. I also would like to point out that there's a right of way that divides our, our lots. Which in the summertime probably has a couple of people walking by it every 10 minutes, looking left and right into his yard and our yard. I have every reason, I'm sure he shares this as well, to want to increase our privacy as well.
This right of way, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Who does it belong to?
I guess the community association, it's, it's deeded, it's a deeded access to the beach.
Do you have a deep access through that also as a property owner?
It, it does not run across, it's, it's separate, it's not, we don't own it.
Okay, and you don't have any vested interest in it or deeded interest?
Correct.
And is that on the east side?
That is on the east side, yes.
All right.
Which, which is between us and Joe Fisaro's property as well, yeah.
All right.
All right, let's hear from Joe.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hold on, just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
State your name and your address.
Joseph Fisaro, 14 Green Hill Lane, Huntington, New York. And as Scott said, we own the property, my family and I at 47 Bayside Avenue in Jamesport.
Okay, so.
And?
So do you still have these objections?
Excuse me?
Do you still have any objections as he had just told us that he's had discussions with you?
Yes, yes, Scott, Scott and I understand, uh, we know that our concern is the garage currently is on the south side of the property. Um, and Scott wants to move it to the corner of the property, which, you know, we're, we're, I mean, I personally think it would lay out better for him where it is and just, that's where the curb cut is, it would be a straight shot in, just slide it down closer to the street. So I, you know, I'm not, I'm not fully understanding why the garage needs to be moved. I know, again, Scott and I spoke and he said it has something to do with the layout of the septic system. Having a background in construction and real estate, I would imagine that it could lay out fine with the garage on that side of the property. But, you know, we want to support Scott and his family and we have no problem whatsoever with the house. We wish them all the best with that. Although the garage is a concern because it's not a one story garage, it's a two story garage. And the, the deck, the steps leading up to the deck are on the second floor. And, um, uh, our arborvitae's 10, 10, 12 and I are not going to string that. And it's, it's, the deck is large enough to have a table and chairs. And I, I totally believe that Scott and Ingrid will not be utilizing that, so to speak, to hang out. But as Scott and I discussed earlier today, none of us knows what the future brings. And once it's built and granted, anybody can do anything that they want with it in the future. Or, or in the present, I mean, if Scott rents out the property, which is of course his right to do and we would have no problem with that. But, you know, people who rent would say, use that as a separate space, in my opinion. And it would just be a, um, a big impact on our privacy. If it was a first, first floor, it would be, probably had relatively no impact because we have plantings along the right of way that, that was discussed prior, which shields us from people going back and forth to the beach. And it would also shield a, a first floor deck patio. But will not seal the second floor deck patio. I had sent an email earlier today, perhaps you, you all have it in front of you?
We do.
Hopefully you've had a chance to, to read it.
We did.
I did.
We, you know, we respectfully request that the, the deck and steps not be on that part of the garage, but on the south side or the street side.
Well, I have a, let me ask the question, did the engineers suggest the, you could have put in an IO system?
We, we have to, yeah, we have to put in.
Yes, so, so if you're going to do that, you're going to redo the whole system and redesign the whole lot.
Yes.
Accommodate that. Did your architect or engineer tell you that you're better off having this house on this side? Or is it because you want to be able to get a view of the bay from the garage?
Oh, well, whether it was on either corner, you could have a view of the bay. It was on the other corner, it would still have a view of the bay.
So why wouldn't you want to move it on the other side if that's what he's looking to see you do? Is that something that would really like defeat what you're trying to accomplish or?
Well, we just.
Is it a compromise?
We just heard about this.
Today.
Today.
Of course.
Um, so, um, the, there's a problem with, I should perhaps have my watch, she is, you'll, she's amazing.
Please, let her step up.
Of course. But it has to do with, there's all kinds of setbacks, not just for the septic system, but for the water line, the electric line.
Correct.
All of these things need to be, come into play.
Let somebody knows what they're talking about, just sit down. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. You have the floor, please.
Okay, thank you. Yes, in our design of the, this project, we pretty much looked at every possibility in placing the dwelling, the garage and so forth. We decided upon the northeast corner because it, uh, Mr. Fisaro's garage is also in that corner and it masses the two buildings together, which we thought would, would be a more attractive look rather than have one here, here and so forth, in our opinion. As Scott pointed out, we regard that view never came into the decision whatsoever. We have like, there's like this little tiny channel on either side, when our new house is built. That is a total, no consequence to us.
So how far off the property line is, is his garage, do you know?
Uh, it is three feet from the public walkway and I'm not sure how far.
And then the walkway width is how much?
Five feet.
Five feet? That's eight. And how many feet are you showing?
Uh, five feet.
Five.
From our front line and the side line.
So you meet the fire code as far as separation is concerned. But is there any compromise to this? Is there something that you could talk to him? Your neighbors are past, it's a note just came up today.
Yeah, it's, you know, he had told us previously that he was fine with everything that we wanted to do, I.
You know, sometimes people think of things at the last minute, I get it.
True, um, it would involve us redo it. I, I really prefer the, strongly prefer the garage where it is. We would have to take out our two maple trees, which are our only remaining trees now because we had to take out other trees because of the new septic system.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So in Mr. Fisaro's letter, he's requesting that the size be limited of the deck to four feet by eight feet rather than the current six feet by 14 feet. I think to address his issue and concern that that deck, which is elevated, would be a public gathering space. And instead he was, I believe, suggesting a reduced size so it really would just accommodate you and your husband's use. Is that a, a matter that you would consider?
Well, it, that's difficult to answer because we have no interest in gathering there at all. So, um, I'm, whether it's, currently it's what, six by 14 and it would be four by eight. Regardless of what size it is, that's not where we're hanging out, it's an access.
Well, it would certainly reduce the amount of people who could gather in that space.
Potentially, absolutely, potentially.
That's the point it was making.
Am I still, am I still smart?
Yes, you're still smart.
I mean, this is obviously a game, or not a game, but a, a compromise. Could we go somewhere between Joe's proposal and our proposal for the size of the landing?
Give us a number.
Well, I, I think you'd be better off talking to him, but you can certainly ask us.
Sure. Well, he proposed four by eight, ours is six by 14, how about five by 10?
It's, it's, excuse me. Do you think I'm pushing it too hard?
Yeah.
They gotta live with each other.
Well.
Don't we compromise with whom we're at?
Excuse me, excuse me, while they're having a discussion.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Ingrid, how are you? We met you the other day, it was very nice talking to you. The right of way that goes down to, the right of way that goes down to the beach. There's growth on both sides of the right of way, right? In the summertime, I mean, I'm sure the growth must get higher. I mean, it's not a little bush, I, I see, you know, remnants of bigger bushes. So is there really a lot of visibly, visibility as far as standing on that deck and looking towards the bay? Do you really see a lot of your neighbors' property from there? I mean, with, when everything's grown up?
In the summertime, no.
Excuse me?
In the summertime, everything is, is much more grown up than, than, yeah.
Okay, that's, I understand there's privacy issues and all that, but, you know, I don't know.
Excuse me, am I still able to?
Go ahead, you're able to say something, sure.
Okay, just, just wanted to be sure. So before we get to talking about shrinking the, the size of it, I, I would still really like to discuss relocating it either to the street side or the south side. I, I, I think, I mean, as I said earlier, I, in my opinion, I think the best location for it is on the south side. I think that would a lot, give them the most yard space. I, I understand Ingrid wants to move it to the southeast corner for aesthetics. And that's obviously there, right and so forth. If that's the case, I would really like to address this privacy concern with a second story deck. By, by, you know, if that, if we're going to compromise, I'd really like to see that relocated.
May I speak?
Sure.
I suspect that our neighbor on the other side might then have the same argument. Either way, somebody might be wind up unhappy.
Did you, you make this look dollhouses?
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually have a comment, yeah. I do have a comment about, about that drawing. The design of the garage, garage that I show in that, in that model that I made, has the gable facing the street side, which is the same direction that the house gable will be in. I just thought of that idea within the past week or so. If you look at the, I don't know if you have the plans that Chuck Thomas drew up, but it will show the garage with the gable facing 90, the 90 degree direction from that. And I just told him about this about a week ago and he had no opportunity to draw up new plans. But basically to explain it, the garage base itself remains exactly the same. The dimensions are the same, the axis is the same, everything. What I was playing around with was just turning the gable 90 degrees because I was thinking it, that it looked better lined up in the same orientation that the house was in. But we could go either way on that. We prefer the way it's in the model, but.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Let's have a reading.
Okay.
Yeah?
Okay, Chairman, for appeal number 2023-018, I move as.
Hold on.
I apologize. Who are you? Is it okay if I speak at this time?
Who are you?
Yes, who are you?
Yeah, my name is Diego Villarreali, I'm an engineer with JMC, John Meyer Consultor.
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. Sorry, just a real quick moment.
Take your time.
I'm an engineer working with JMC. Mr. and Mrs. Baker asked us to be here this evening. They've asked us just to join the meeting to listen in. And I'd just like to echo what the applicant had indicated before. The Bakers are in full support of the application and the variances. The only thing that they'd asked us to touch on is similar to what they're doing there. The adjacent property that the Bakers own at 37 Bayside Avenue is in similar condition. And, you know, they fully expect to come in with a similar application in the near future. And, you know, they fully expect to come in with a similar application, um, in the near future.
Okay.
Again, I think everybody believes this will be a support, a, a benefit to the property and they are in full support of the granted variances. That was it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Let's have a reading.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero one eight, I move that the appeal of John and Ingrid Cordvalesi, uh, forty-one Bayside Avenue, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map, six hundred dash ninety-three point one dash one dash five, in residence B forty, RB forty zoning for variances and/or relief from town code chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed side setback is ten foot when twenty-five foot is required. Chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed combined side yard is twenty-one point one inches, where fifty-five is required. Chapter three oh one dash fourteen, where upper levels in an accessory structure not incidental to or customarily found in a single family dwelling. Chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed side accessory setback is five foot, twenty foot is required. Chapter three oh one dash fifteen A one A, where accessory structure is not permitted to be constructed in a front yard. Chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed impervious surface is twenty-two point six percent and maximum allowable is fifteen percent. And chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed rear yard setback is twenty-four foot to be covered portion of rear deck where six foot is required. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed by the building inspector.
Second. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zaweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so best of luck with everything.
Good luck.
You really moving from Hawaii here? You really moving from Hawaii here?
Well, we'll spend a little time there too.
Get out of here. Okay, next up.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero two twenty-two, Eleanor Chiraro. Six Fred's Lane, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash seventy dash one dash fifty-one, RB forty zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed rear yard setback twenty-six feet, eight inches, minimum sixty feet required.
You wanna go to the microphone, please?
Never done this before, okay.
If you kinda raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Eleanor Chiraro, Six Fred's Lane, Jamesport, New York. I can't do it. I just took them today and a week ago.
Are you the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Which half?
She has her photos, she just has them online and I needed her to email them to me.
Okay. Tracy, was there something about the mailing and the posting with this also?
That was the first round. She's, I have her mailings, I just need to see that her post right.
There is the photo from a week ago and then I have, they're still up, but I had to take it down for a night because of rain. Because those postings are like this big.
Hi, um.
I think you're exaggerating a little bit, but I understand, I got it.
I don't think I am.
All right, all right, all right. Let's hear what you have to say.
Right, okay.
Hello, am I, am I still allowed to speak here?
Who's that guy?
Who are you?
Uh, Joe Fazaro, we were just talking.
It's over with, Joe.
What, why is it over? I.
The appeal was read, there was granted, it's over.
What, what happened to our concerns? I don't understand.
We took them under, we took them under advisement and we made a decision.
You, you didn't give us anything that we asked for, not even a smaller deck and landing?
No, no. It's over. Thank you very much, but you have to go off the air now.
There's, there's no, we don't get any reasoning behind that? It seems so unfair.
If you want to, you might, you can see an attorney. Tracy.
It seems very unfair. I think our requests were very reasonable.
We listened to it.
We, we get, we, we asked for three, uh, and then we were willing to compromise.
But we made a decision, end of story. Tracy.
Okay.
Are you ready?
I am. Here's the deal. We bought a very tiny house twenty-three years ago, very tiny. And both my kids live in the city, we want a guest room. And we are proposing to build on a very small addition to the house. It, it, it's, we're cutting our deck in half and, um, putting in an office and a guest room. That's it. And I have spoken to my neighbor behind me who received my letter, um, and said, "Oh, you're not gonna build that thing right up to our house, are you?" And I'm like, "Not even, it's gonna be about as big as the deck plus five feet."
Okay.
Um, and no other neighbors, which I am in constant contact with because I live there. Nobody cares.
Okay.
So, there's that.
Well, we will see. Is anyone out there to be heard on this matter?
If they are.
There's nobody, so let's have a reading.
Anybody on the bill? No one's raising their, no one's raising their hand.
There was one correction, I believe, about.
Twenty-eight one versus twenty-six.
The twenty-eight point one, actually, uh, instead of, the application is twenty-six feet point, uh, twenty-six feet, eight inches, as opposed to, it's in reality twenty-eight point one, I believe.
Okay, I didn't measure it, but I can tell you one thing. I think this, the city requires sixty feet.
Yeah.
And not a single family.
We understand that, we just have to have the right number there.
Oh.
On your survey.
I may have written down the wrong number, I tried.
You haven't written it down.
The, the number you wrote down, or like, the number that's the actual twenty-eight, is actually better than the number that you wrote down.
Oh.
You, you had twenty-six and change. This is large, this is twenty-eight and change.
Yeah, and, and we're not anywhere near sixty. This place was divided up like in nineteen fifty.
Okay.
All right.
Let's hear, let's have a reading.
Hi, with respect to Mr. Chairman, regarding to appeal number two oh two-three dash oh two-two, I move the appeal of Eleanor Chiraro.
Chiraro.
Chiraro. Try and pronounce my name. Six Fred's Lane, Jamesport, SCTM Number six hundred dash seventy point dash one dash five one, Residence B dash forty, RB forty zoning, variance and/or relief from town code chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where the proposed rear yard setback is twenty-eight point one, uh, twenty-eight feet, one inch, minimum required, sixty be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches, with amendments thereto, if any, as, as filed with the building inspector.
Still waiting for the, what's the?
Hold on now, hold on. Wait here a second.
Shall move first, now a second.
All right. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zaweski.
Aye.
And being a Fred, I vote aye too.
Yes.
There you go.
Victorious.
Well, best of luck. You get some paperwork from the building department, take it from there.
Thank you very much.
You're quite well. And don't forget your phone.
My neighbors, I won't put a mirror, I won't put a window.
Good night.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have you, we'll have you run the next meeting for us. Okay, go ahead.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash twen- zero twenty-three, eight eighteen Roanoke Avenue LLC, eight eighteen Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash one twenty-six dash two dash twenty-four. Professional business, um, zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one dash eighty-four, where proposed lot number one at fifteen thousand one hundred sixty-eight square feet, forty thousand square feet is required, and proposed lot number two at fifteen thousand thirty-one square feet, forty thousand square feet required.
Good evening. If you kinda raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Good. I'm glad you pulled the microphone down, I didn't have to tell you.
Lisa Poyer, Twin Forks Permits, on behalf of the applicant, two eight eight East Montauk Highway, Hampton Bays, New York. So, the subject lot fronts along Roanoke Avenue and also cuts straight through the property to Pondview Road as well. The lot is thirty thousand one hundred ninety-nine square feet. The entire subject property is located in a PB zone. Uh, the adjacent lots along Roanoke are also in the same PB zone and the adjacent lots along Pondview Road are Residence A forty zone. The required lot area in PB zone is forty thousand square feet. The existing lot at the thirty thousand one ninety-nine square feet is seventy-five percent of the required zoning. And the existing lot is, like I said, it's a through lot which goes from Roanoke all the way to Pondview. It's unique in the neighborhood in that it's the only property in that area that has that kind of a lot configuration. The owners are seeking a variance from chapter three oh one dash eighty-four to create two undersized lots with lot one at fifteen thousand one sixty-eight square feet, which is going to front along Roanoke Ave. And lot two, which is fifteen thousand thirty-one square feet, will trail front along Pondview Road. I believe the creation of the lots will not have a detriment to the neighborhoods in the fact that it will bring more conformity to the two lots in the areas. Uh, the average lot size along the east side of Roanoke Ave, just that area, basically from Southern Parkway to Franklin Street, the average lot size is eleven thousand seventy-three square feet. So, our proposed lot at fifteen thousand one sixty-eight will be greater than the average lot size. The lot, average lot size is ranged from seven thousand three hundred ninety-three square feet to eighteen thousand forty-eight, so it's right in that area. Again, the average lot size along the west side of Pondview Road is eleven thousand one ninety-four square feet, where our proposed lot two will be fifteen thousand thirty-one square feet. Once again, it's gonna be larger than the average. The lots in that area are four thousand two twenty-one, all the way to seventeen thousand nine eighty-one square feet. In general, we believe that it will be in character with the neighborhoods. The application was before the planning board and that's who actually issued with the planning, sorry, with the building department, the denial letter. Uh, the planning board reviewed the application, they issued a staff report, which was dated March thirteenth, I'm sorry, March tenth, twenty twenty-three. Then a denial letter was dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. In the staff report, it recommends approving the subdivision, but it also recommends a conditioning of a filing of a covenant on lot two, which will be the Pondview Road lot, that no future, or that only future development will be limited to single family residents. And I believe the town board recently passed a law stating that residences are allowed in PB zones as a permitted use. The owners have agreed to that condition or will agree to that condition in filing of a covenant. So, again, we then believe that that will be more in nature with the community and the neighborhood along Pondview.
Okay, very well done. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions?
Anybody?
Zoom, anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom on this?
Anyone on Zoom this evening?
Okay, all right. I have one question. Leroy, that's the only district, uh, square footage, uh, twelve hundred is required?
Residents.
Yes.
I think it's fifteen.
So, my question would be, uh, based upon the, if, if the zoning board of appeals was to grant this application, a lot on Pondview, would you be able to construct a house that meets the square footage requirements without additional variance relief?
There was a draft zoning analysis that we did and it, there is a building envelope. I can provide that as a condition.
The code has a minimum requirement for square footage requirement.
Correct.
So, people that are setting a plan to get to different, are they gonna build the house or they're just gonna sell the lot?
They're planning on building it because they're going to retain both lots.
Okay, so it's one square feet or two square feet or greater?
Okay. And that could be two floors. The, the fifteen hundred square feet is not one floor, it's, could be potentially.
Well, I have to look the zoning up with the, the minimum requirement on the first floor of the house.
Okay. We can definitely put that there.
Within the side yard front, may I require?
Yeah, I can take a look at that and then provide as a condition, if you'd like, a zoning analysis. I think the surveyors did one at one point.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you wouldn't condition if it's in the code.
The, the planning board had a condition that if the Roanoke Avenue property was developed as like a office business or a, you know, professional business, that it would, with the current house location, meet, um, parking, dumpster setbacks, all that information. So, we did provide that to the planning board as well.
Okay. All right. I'll fly with it. I mean, let's have a reading, okay.
Mr. Chairman, appeal, regarding appeal number two zero two-three dash oh two-three, I move the appeal of eight one eight Roanoke Avenue LLC, also eight one eight Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead.
Hold on, wait a minute. You have a question? Please, step up. We can hold the vote up. Just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Just state your name, your address.
My name, Lubov Pechenyuk, and I'm.
Into the, into the microphone.
I'm, um, neighbor.
And your name again?
Lubov Pechenyuk. And I'm neighbor, uh, this lot, Pondview Road.
Right.
Okay, I understand it's not exactly, my question is for, um, particularly what's going on now because now it's dividing for two lot. But second lot will be my neighbor.
Right.
And I wanna know who this neighbor will be and what's going on with that property because I live in that property more like twenty-five years. And I have very, very problem with old tree in this property. I believe in a two thousand eight, some big piece branch fell in my property and I might bring new car and make me damage. And at that time, owner, my insurance go to owner that property and owner told my insurance it's act of God. So, my insurance pay for my damage, my car. Now, over this year, there's still old tree there. In fact, right now, a big piece branch who's already dry, just a henna over another branch. And anytime, any big wind will blow iron over where, in my car, in my driver, driveway, in my house, I have no clue. If you wanna, I provide you photo where is I couple time have problem with dead branches from the tree. If you wanna become my neighbor, whatever you going to do with that property, build house or anything like that, before you do anything, please take care of that tree.
I don't know what to say.
I don't know what to say either because I have no.
You're in the wrong place for that.
I know that, but I wanna let you know.
I understand, but still.
This owner know to.
It has nothing to do with what they in front of us were.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
I understand that, but you still.
But this is my concern and this is why I'm here.
Well, I understand that, but.
Do you wanna respond to that in any fashion?
Yeah.
Okay.
See, no response.
A house is gonna, no, the house is gonna go there.
Okay, that's fine, I can't do nothing about it.
But we can't, we don't control, we don't control who they rented out to, who they sell it to.
So, what, uh, please, um, give me some advice.
So, I'm not permitted to give you legal advice. You can certainly seek representation and if an adjacent properties, uh, if an adjacent property is causing your property damage, you can certainly commence an action and claim against them.
Yes, I have to do that because before they become my neighbor, I have to do this. Thank you so much. Sorry if I'm not in a proper, proper lit.
You are and you're not, you know, but it's, if what you're concerned, we try to give you an answer. You have to see, you have to see legal advice.
Okay.
But thank you.
Can I just ask you to spell your name for me, please?
Lubov, L-Y-U-B-O-V, and last name Pechenyuk, P-E-C-H-E-N-Y-U-K.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Go brothers.
Lubov, you did well. Nice to see you. Nice to see you too.
Nice to see you, too.
All right.
All right, once again, Mr. Chairman.
Let's finish it up.
Regarding appeal number two zero two three dash oh two three, I moved that the appeal of eight one eight Roanoke Avenue LLC, eight one eight Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, SCTM number six hundred dash one two six point dash two dash two four, business PB, the USPB zoning for variance and/or relief from the town, from Town Code Chapter three oh one dash eighty-four, with proposed lot number one at fifteen thousand one hundred sixty-eight square feet, forty thousand square feet is required, and proposed lot number two at fifteen thousand zero three one square feet, and again, with forty thousand square feet is required, be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
I'm listening.
Shall move.
Second.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Guzzillo.[1753.81]